Jeff, you ready?
That's cool though, so there's a little fire.
September 20th.
You are now officially live.
There we go. Good evening, welcome to the Hopkins Town Council meeting for June 16th, 2025. Let's start from moment, silent meditation, salute to the flag.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, councilors. Ask everybody to silence their phone and put on mute, please.
I think it is. I think so.
Call, call, Council James.
Here.
Council Roy.
Present.
Council Davis.
Present.
Council Burns.
Yeah.
Believe I'm here. First up, public comment, anybody? There's no one on, no. Nobody online.
Hello. Atta Sazlov, Karen Drive. I would just like to request a future agenda item for you to consider. An update on the rebuild here. I'm just curious. It doesn't have to be done tonight, but you can prepare for it. A lot of people are interested and saw the big puddle of water out there and we're just curious about how that has been dealt with. So.
Yeah, once, yeah, once a month, I think we talked about, I think the town mayor gave an update towards the end of May, we'll do one.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anybody else in town, county, town, public comment? Brian, nobody online?
No, there's no one on.
I'm forward. The agenda looks good, anybody want to change anything?
No.
Consent agenda. Approved town council meeting minutes of June 2nd, 2025. Approved town council executive session minutes of June 2nd, 2025. Approved refund submitted by the tax collector. Approved monthly report.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion for second, opposed.
We can only change that. I can be a part of the town clerk thing, but I can't be part of the June 2nd meeting, I wasn't here.
So which one you want out?
The June 2nd meeting?
Yes. Separate.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the town council meeting minutes of June 2nd, 2025 and the executive session meetings of June 2nd, 2025. That's all, I'm changing my thing.
Second.
Motion for second, all in favor? James, aye.
Davis, aye.
Roy, aye.
I'm standing.
I make a motion that we approve the refund submitted by tax collector and approve the monthly report by the town clerk.
Second.
Motion for second, all in favor?
James, aye.
Davis, aye.
Roy, aye.
Burns, aye.
Yuri, aye. Excellent. Very good, councilors. Bigities and appointments. One, discuss and consider possibly vote to accept the resignation of Joseph Moreau from the Economic EDC or Economic Development Commission. I would like to start off to say, Joe, we might not always agree on things, but I know your best interests for the town. I apologize and I'm sorry that you're leaving. Hopefully you consider another board or commission somewhere down the road.
I agree.
Joe, I'd like to say, I've worked with you on many situations throughout the town over the last almost three years now. Couple times, we definitely did not see eye to eye. We battled on a few subjects. We came to get along and seen a lot of things and we both realized that we're both for the town. And I appreciate what you've done on several boards. Everything you've joined up for, I mean, you do try to put your full effort in. And I just think that people need to know that. And I hope that your adventures, and I don't want to put your business out there, but I hope your time with your personal life that you need right now perspires and works out very well for you. And maybe you'll have more time to run for town council next time.
Thanks, Joe. Just want to say thank you for all you've done throughout the years.
I agree too, thank you.
I make a motion to accept Mr. Moreau's resignation.
Second.
Motion for second, all in favor?
James, aye.
Davis, aye.
Roy, aye.
Burns, aye.
Yuri with regret. Thank you, Joe. New business. One, discuss and consider possibly vote to adopt the financial resolution and tax resolution for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025. Did you want to speak on this?
I mean, if you liked me too, it went well. Actually, maybe Marita could say, fill us in on the outcome of the vote was.
Yeah, the vote was intent. Uh, let me see, I'll just put it out there just in case. We're sorry, it's got my indie little thing here.
Who's the last thing you said?
Right here. So, we had 333 voters, the budget passed 223, yes, 100, no. No votes. The land trust bond passed 212, yes, to 121, no. And the 250th commission passed 180, 194, yes, to 129, no. Either way, not always the best turnout. But, that was put out there. Not sure what we got to do to get people to the polls to vote on this stuff. This way we don't get questions later down the road. I did see on some social media two or three days later, hey, is the vote going on? How did the vote go? So, you know, I know we had it up on the, we had it posted, had it up on the website.
There was, there was text messages that went out like daily.
Yeah, emails.
There's nothing saying that, nobody can say.
Well, we don't, and people say they.
No, no.
No matter what you do, people are going to say, oh, we didn't know about it. We put it all over the website, social media, we did the robocalls. It's in the newspaper, it's on the website.
Yeah, no, it was out there, I mean, people just didn't get out. The only thing, feedback that I got on the vote was I had a few people message me and ask me about the remaining money going to the 250th commission, about that question. And I had explained to a few people and I think maybe next time that we have something like this, we should explain, even if it's only the people that come, we should explain it out there where people can go back and review it. And I explained to them that that was our leftover money that was sitting there that wasn't going to go nowhere, that we were giving to the commission. And that's why I think you got a lot of votes that said no on it. It passed, but.
Right. So, yeah, I agree, the, the problem is, it's kind of a moving target. So, we put information on the website saying like this is the balance, but you know, then we send flowers to, you know, a father of a deceased employee or, you know, then it changes like the next day. So, it was a moving target, so you can't really put the dollar amount in there.
No, no, I didn't mean dollar.
$50 at one point.
I just mean, mean, explain the remaining balance.
Right.
Not a dollar amount.
So, unspent remaining.
No, it does, but we didn't explain to people, people didn't understand what even, some people didn't even know what the contingency fund was.
I have a, I have a question. So, is there any way in the future, like, we have, like, thousands of residents. Is there any way to set up some type of committee or subcommittee of some sort for voter engagement?
Sure, yeah, we, it's been discussed in the past.
Because when I saw these numbers, I was like.
Yeah, but that's been the way for.
Yeah, no, I understand, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be going forward. It doesn't have to be the norm. It can be improved upon.
It'd be great, but you can lead a horse to water.
I, I, I totally understand that, but if we had some type of committee or some commission to.
You know, we, we kind of thought that by actually putting stuff on the website, that that was make, would make it better. And it hasn't.
So, we had a communication committee. And a lot of members were on it, members in the audience were on it. You know, and, and that lasted for a little while and, you know, there was some positive input there. But we never, I mean, I, I think at this point, we've kind of entertained it and I think the, the best approach would be to do a direct mailer to all the residents, which can be a little bit costly, but that's the only other thing I could think of that we're not doing.
Maybe we can put on the agenda, Mike, to maybe look into reinstating that type of.
Yeah, it's something we could definitely look at.
Yeah.
We got what? Another year before we have another vote, right?
Yeah.
That's what comes up school.
School committee, yeah. And we need, we need voter engagement.
I'm just curious, what was the balance that was left over?
It was 650, I believe, was the balance that we put on the website, if I recall. But then I think there was a situation where we purchased flowers for a.
Okay, $650?
Yeah, the total contingency fund was 5,000 for the year.
And that's what was left.
Memory too.
Yeah, that's fine, I was just curious.
Yeah, and it was, there was about, yeah, when we initially had, it was like 650 at last I checked.
I would just like to make an observation. How many years have we had about 300 people come to vote for the budget?
Long, lot of years.
A lot of years. And I'm just wondering if it's worth the money to hold a budget referendum? And if there needs to be a charter change or something that.
No, I.
I mean, is it statewide or what, what's the story on that? I don't know.
No, I think we, we're doing the right thing and I think if the charter says we have to have a financial resolution, I think the people have to have the opportunity to vote. Whether they vote or take advantage of that opportunity is up to them.
I think they would be more interested in your building of the budget if they didn't have the vote.
Why we had, we, we.
I know.
We reviewed the budget workshop, we have five workshops.
I know, I'm here for them, I know it, but.
No, but some people in the past thought that, that financial resolution, the one meeting before we do the vote, the last public meeting, they thought that was when we would go through the whole budget.
I know.
Line by line, and I said, no, we've had.
Okay, I just.
Different workshops, so we've tried a variety of ways to make the.
Well, we haven't hit the right way yet, that's what I'm saying. We need more communication. And I was on that communications committee and, you know, one of the big things that we pushed for was an email list of all residents. And we've never really pushed for that, but that would be a good way to inform people about the vote.
But I get it. I think you have to sign up on the web.
Yeah, you do, but we're not getting people to do it.
Two emails and, and two phone calls.
Yeah, but we're.
But we're signed up, but look how many, how many people are on that email list.
Right, but I guess at some point, it's like, we can't keep blaming the town, it's like, we're doing every.
Right, I'm not blaming you.
I mean, how many more ideas? We could rent a hot air balloon, but at some point, if people don't come out and vote, it's like, you know, we're trying to place the blame on the town.
Okay, here's another way to look at it.
To just get out and vote.
They trust you, they've elected you, it's a representative government. And it's your job to do a budget. And if you get a bad budget and they don't like it, they'll ask you on the next election. Obviously, that's not been the case here, but that's, that's the way things work.
And, and I will tell you, you know, obviously, the very first time I got on the council, I thought, because I love budgets, I'm going to find this, there is no waste.
Right.
Guys, there's no waste.
Right, and we trust you and that's why we passed the budget. You know, you're the guys who are doing it, you're doing the work.
Brian, my first two years here, Brian, did I not?
Yeah, I mean, it's like, I mean, like, like Public Works and being like, oh, you're going to cut your.
No, I, I'm not saying cut the budget, that's not what I'm about.
Office one day, legit, just about screaming.
I just think we waste money on an election for 300 people, that's my point.
Do that, it's in the charter and I think you have to.
There's, I've lived places where nobody votes on a budget. It is made by the council, it is made by the commission, whoever is elected makes those decisions.
I think the tax.
That's not Hopkins, that's not Hopkins, and I think, I think Hopkins should have the right to vote.
I'd rather not make that decision, somebody, I'd rather the town people have that right to vote.
So you can see.
Okay, we, we will agree to disagree, but it's just, we just keep going and doing the same thing over and over and over. And it's just like nostalgia takes over instead of common sense, that's what I'm saying. And I'm all, I'm very nostalgic about many things, but.
What's the result? What's the result?
I know, thank you.
The opportunity to vote.
That's right.
I know, and we give you the right to make a lot of decisions for us. We have elected you to do that, it's your job.
And, and I guess it's worth noting that, you know, not just the budget referendum, it's like pretty much across the board, like all the votes. We were just talking about it, Marita, and I, it's.
Right.
The only time we get any sort of turnout is, we literally just had this conversation was with the presidential. And that's, and we're at like, what, a thousand or two? Couple thousand.
I know, listen, I fight to get out the vote too, but it doesn't work.
Below 30% on, on presidential, so it's like.
Even when, even when it was a town council vote and it wasn't the presidential, it was low. It was, yeah, low turnout.
Yeah, and we've got a midterm election come up, coming up, and it'll be a low turnout too, for that probably. But we're going to work to get people out. I just wanted to say that, I've been wanting to say it for a long time. This looked like a good opportunity since you didn't have an agenda that was going till 10 o'clock, so.
Okay, thank you, Atta, we, we, we understand. Yep, good, Joe.
Joe Moreau. You know, when you go to the budgeting workshops and you see myself, maybe a couple of people show up for each one, town council members, Brian and Marita and you guys, everybody works really hard to get that budget, put it together, we have the referendum and you. I probably had two emails, eight or nine phone calls, text messages. I mean, the word was out there, people, people should have the right to vote. I disagree with, with Atta somewhat on this. People, town residents should have the right to vote. It's their choice, if they choose not to vote, they can't say, well, I didn't have the opportunity to vote. And I think the town has done a great job to get the message out, people just do not show up at council meetings. And we probably have four or five people here, I'm assuming, to talk about the Hope Valley Elementary School. Otherwise, it'd be myself and Gary. Nothing wrong.
Happy to have you and Gary.
Thank you.
Good, good seats though.
And a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to vote to adopt the financial resolution and tax resolution for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025.
Second.
Motion for second, opposed, abstaining, all in favor?
James, aye.
Davis, aye.
Roy, aye.
Burns, aye.
I'd like to thank, definitely thank the town council for sitting through a lot of the financial workshops, especially Brian and his staff finance, getting everything together, line items.
Absolutely.
List to us complaining about stuff, ask questions, so. Yep, not the greatest turnout.
That we did.
Okay, we got it, we got it approved, so that's the biggest thing.
Yeah, all suggestions are good.
Move forward. Discuss, discussion with the public regarding how Hopkins residents wish to remember the Hope Valley Elementary School, Council Davis.
Okay, on September, no, that can't be September 4th, June 4th. June 4th, I attended the Hope Valley School Improvement Team meeting run by the principal of Hope Valley Elementary. The last school day will be June 18th, there will be a senior appreciation parade. Also, a we love Hope Valley Elementary calendar of events over this week, because it's June 18th when I have my operation, so. Anyway, the end of the school year, dance party with bubbles and chalk. So, you could tell, you could tell our public works people that there will be chalk all over Hope Valley Elementary School. They claim that it rushes, it runs off when you get, you get water on it.
Most of it washed.
Yeah, washed. The police and fire and parents will be cheering the last buses as they leave the school. And there will be an ice, supposedly an ice cream social for the students only and their families on that day. Cynthia Drummond will take pictures of the last day. A memory book will be compiled and scanned as a PDF and stored at the Langworthy Library. The school improvement team wanted an item for the kids and the staff to remember them. They were thinking about maybe an aerial shot, I don't know. This is stuff that they discussed, I don't know how much of this is going to happen. And have the, have the kids make an HVE and they're accepting, parents willing to help with all of that. August 6th is the last Teacher's Day because it's also the end of the preschool. Preschool keeps going after June 18th. Until August 1st, or August 6th, rather. Let's see. And then, the school will be broom swept and delivered back to the town on September 1st. Superintendent Picard is compiling a list of memorial items that are already at Hope Valley Elementary. There's a plaque somewhere honoring a teacher who passed away, there's a bench somewhere. And so she's going to, and they also want to do a capsule, a, a time capsule at some point. So those are, those are three things that they're thinking of. But I don't have that list yet. So, my question is, what does a town want to do to remember the Hope Valley Elementary School? Do we want another bench? And I found this cast. A bronze cast bench with two kids in there reading a book. I think that's pretty. It's $3,250, which we'd have to, we'd have, it's made out of bronze. Yeah, and, and you know, because I have bought other things from Tuscano.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the water, like, I, I, there's a little girl that has a basket and I left it out. And I left it out over the winter and the water and the snow actually drilled a hole in the basket. So that's not a good. But I don't think too much can happen to bronze.
Where would it go?
Well.
That's, that's.
Yeah, I, we're, we're having this to get input from the residents so they can say that they had an input into what they would want for the school. Do you want another bench like that? Or do you want a different bench? Do you want a statue? Do you want a plaque? And I have no idea what the plan is for that school building. But I would assume that somewhere along the line, we need to create a, a little committee to talk about that. I know.
This is a council decision.
Okay, well, I, I just, you know, I don't want people to be like the 1904 building where they felt they had, you know, no say and. At least, we have the opportunity now to do something and put, get our say in and make choices. So that's why we're having this workshop. Does anybody have anything to say?
Maybe we could do something, maybe some social media or something, maybe we could put something on the website, what would you like to see?
Yeah, I like that, I like that.
You want to do like a survey on the website or something like that?
Give us your suggestions on how you would like to.
That work, okay.
Honor that, something like that.
Overhead footage, that'd be great.
We just really, yeah, remember the stuff when we went with Jack Reed for the 1904, all those shots.
How is this? Is there a committee already established, like, that's meeting?
Maybe, maybe Sharon, maybe you could meet with, or maybe get an email to the superintendent and the vice principal, maybe get some of their input on what they want to do, or what they would like to see. Yeah, what they would like to see.
And you're, is the expectation that the town is going to get someone with a drone there, is that what we're talking about? Yeah, but we haven't spoken with him. I mean, he did help us with Ashley School, but he also, we also gave him like a window of like, you know, a couple of months, he's, he's a busy guy. I'd be happy to reach out to him, but I don't want to like make promises on his behalf without speaking to him. And, and it would have to be what, what, I guess maybe, once you contact Jeff, the, the principal, let me know more details. Because I would have to, you would have to be there on a specific day. I might know someone else that could do it as well. But just let me know more details.
You only got two days left for school.
Yeah, I know, that's the thing. Yeah, I know, that is.
Set this up tomorrow, unfortunately. You ain't, you ain't going to do that in 48 hours.
Well, then it's.
No, just, I think we're, we're going a little kilt here. We're trying to, we're trying to get maybe, maybe Al Dior or somebody else that could take a shot. You guys, you know, you guys could work on that, as far as what we want to do. Get up in nice big red letters, or however Jeff does his magical stuff there and say, hey, we're looking for input on how would you like to remember Hope Valley? Us five will put it up, or four or five will put it out to social media and say, hey, we're looking for input. Give it, give it some kind of cutoff date of say December 1st, that should give us what, three months to come up with a path ready. If people want to come in to the podium, hey, this is what we'd like to see, we'd like to see.
Yeah, because there's a much different timeline as far as like memorial type thing as opposed to getting shots on the last day. on the last day of school.
Well, forget, okay, then maybe the aerial thing is not the thing. But, you know, that's fine. I, I'm just, I went there for one meeting, and those were some of the things that were thrown out at that meeting.
Not only that, you still gotta send out permission slips and stuff to parents, because some parents won't even let their kids get photographed in the school books.
They just, those kids don't participate.
I understand that, but you still have, so, if you don't send a notice home to the parent, and all of a sudden you pull all them kids outside, that parent finds out that their kid participated?
The school has to.
Yes, yeah, they already have them signed. Because I, I think.
It's, it's, I think what's, what's trying to say is, it's not like when we were kids, no, right? Times are definitely totally different, but, all right, so.
So, I, I mean, I was just telling you all the stuff that happened at the meeting. Maybe we can't participate in that part, the, the drone thing.
Yeah.
Maybe, but, but we can talk about a memorial.
Yes.
Bench.
Or a plaque.
A plaque, or if you wanna have.
And then a location, you're just gonna pick, as a bench, you have to pick a spot on the property. That would be best, best visible. A plaque could go on the side of the building. It could go just about anywhere.
Which playground?
That might make more sense. That's the other thing we gotta think about long term, you know?
Yeah, because they're taking.
You don't wanna play something there.
Because the other playground is going with the school.
Yeah.
This is the lower.
Yeah, the lower one is the Langworthy one.
That probably makes more sense, because that way you don't have to worry about like relocating it down the road if, you know, who knows what happens, you know? So, you don't wanna have it, it's kind of like, yeah. You put it there, and you say, this is the spot, and it's right in front of the school, and then.
And you, then you lease the building out.
To whatever, that, yeah, that makes sense.
And they wanna put some walkway there.
And then all the kids would be at the playground, and they would be able to see it, and so would the rest of the community.
Put it somewhere where you know it's not gonna have to be re, revoked.
Yeah, when I lease it from the town, I'm making low income hoteling, you know? I don't, I don't wanna plaque it.
Oh, really?
That's why I said it.
All right, so, so, that's someone we're gonna work with. Maybe we can get some ideas.
All right, and, and should we have a, should we have a committee? Or just, maybe we should just do that, the survey first.
Yeah.
Do, do, we'll do a poll.
May I, may I interrupt?
No.
Whomever is speaking from the audience, Mr. President, cannot be heard.
All right, we just, yeah.
I'm just saying, I have been doing some historical research on the school, and in doing so, I, um, think that there's a lot of variables as to what community members want.
Yeah.
They have different memories.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
They have different wants, and I think the best thing to do is to take a, a poll or a survey.
Yeah.
And see what the consensus is.
I mean, with the nineteen oh four building, Tom Buck, uh, took some actual, some, some bricks, and he had them etched. You know, you know, nineteen oh four building. And there was a gentleman at the farm stand, and he was probably about seventy-five, maybe eighty, somewhere up in there. Started asking questions about it. He goes, right, like that? And I said, hey, hold on, I got something. Went out to my truck, brought back a brick, gave it to him, started frying. He goes, I went there, my kids went there, my grandkids went there, so, a lot of memories, a lot of stuff that goes on, you know, that. I mean, we won't honor it, right?
Yeah, well, and I, and part of it is, when you talk about Hope Valley School, there's also the original Hope Valley School.
Right.
Which is not the school we're in right now. So, people who went to that one are saying, well, this is also the memory from that.
Right.
Because theirs is gone. It's now a vacant lot.
Yep.
So, I think that they need to be included in it. It's just a way.
Reach out and talk, and like I said.
Well, and some people mentioned that they would love to have a walkthrough of the building, which of course can't happen until after everybody's out. And then it's not gonna look like a school, because everything will be stripped, because everything has to be taken out of the building.
That's right.
So.
Something maybe we can, you know, when everything's said and done.
Yeah.
Maybe we can do that.
I think, I think it's just, a lot of people want different things. So, taking a poll, I think, is an excellent idea.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so, we don't need to vote on this, but.
No, we were just, this is just a workshop. Yes, ma'am?
Um, my name's Jean Arthur, and, uh, I did come to the town council meeting tonight specifically for this agenda item. And, uh, I love the idea of putting, um, the question out to, uh, parents and the community via social media. I think that's a very good idea. Um, I wanted to stress, as a former teacher, that, um, this, this may be the, the, what we, what we give in honor of the Hope Valley Elementary School, um, can benefit the children themselves. So, like, I really love benches. I, I think that's wonderful, and bricks. I've seen that done. Um, but maybe, um, because I've lived in different parts of the state and seen a lot of different playgrounds as my child was growing up, uh, maybe we do something, uh, like enhancing the playground at Langworthy, like in, like a giant swing set or something, and saying, this is, uh, in, in, for Hope Valley Elementary School. It, it benefits the kids, and, um, they get a real Benny out of it, you know? Um, so, just, I know you'll get a lot of responses, but i- if you could keep in mind, uh, your gift being very kid central.
Thank you.
Yes, I like the idea of maybe revamping that baseball field that's in the Langworthy field.
Where was that?
That's, that's in the field.
It's right next to it.
Right next to the school.
Right next to where the stairs are.
Behind.
When you come to the bottom of the stairs, that's the baseball field. But you wouldn't know it, because it's.
It hasn't been used.
Hasn't been revamped or anything, so.
Last question, Anna.
So, I had attended, uh, Hope Valley sit meeting before the last one, Sharon, and it had, it was attended by about thirty parents and community members, and nobody has mentioned this, but there were people there who, kids had gone to Hope Valley. They had gone to Hope Valley, their parents, I mean, they're still alive people who did that, and they want some kind of ceremony to commemorate. Um, and they would like to hear, or have the opportunity to get up to a mic and tell a memory. So, just maybe that needs to be in the survey, if anybody has memories. Um, and if, if you get some of those, you might get a good speaker to talk about their experience at that school. Um, or somebody to talk about that. I know that is a lot, but, um, I don't know. I, I think that this community needs it, that they are struggling with losing that school. Um, our town of Hope Valley is struggling with it. So, I, I think a community, uh, gathering of some kind, which could easily be done outside on the playground that goes with it. Um, people could bring their own chairs, and all you're gonna have to have is like a sound system set up so we can hear, and let them have a walkthrough, and then dedicate whatever, you know, memorial or whatever you decide. And it probably should be done, you know, this fall at some point before this drags on like the eighteen oh four building. That's what we're trying to prevent, is that big uproar. We've gotta come together and start getting along, and not always be in an adversarial position. So, sorry, I'm so worried.
All right, so, we'll leave it there. We'll come back to it. We will, uh, we'll come back to this.
Okay.
You wanna come back to this, say, longest time, give it a little bit of time, get it out there, something like that.
Start getting some feedback. Do you want me to put the poll up right away, and then?
Yeah, the next day or two.
Yeah. We have some feedback when we get the.
Yep.
Excellent.
Can you, can you send the link in a email to the, to the council, so that way I can share it out?
Yeah, we'll put it on the Facebook page. We'll put it on our social media, and we'll, yeah.
Hey, anybody have a comment?
No, there's no, no one on there.
There's no one on mine.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn in the memory or the birthday of the Army of the two hundred and fiftieth.
Second.
First, second? James, aye.
Davis, aye.
Roy, aye.
Burns, aye.